Well, Mike, you asked for this meeting, so we'll let you go ahead and...
Okay, well, I, we, was it two or three years ago that y'all got appointed onto the Port Authority Board? And really, you're supposed to be our representatives on the Port Authority Board. So I guess I want to know kind of what you guys have experienced on there and if there's any questions you have for us, and then we can just talk about the philosophy, maybe what the commission is looking for as far as what you guys...
It, one, it's a great group of people. I understand a little bit more of the history of it, how far back it goes, representative of the Bay of Flinmore County. And it's a great group of guys. It's disappointing once in a while when some of them fall off, and we, they're new people, and I'm sure they look at us as relatively new people to train.
Yeah.
They had people on there for years and years and years, which helped, and they've got new people. So I think, I think we did good work there. It gives us a little more freedom you all have, maybe because you answer to an electorate than we answer to you. We have a little more freedom. We don't deal with much money there, but it does help. I think you brought some businesses in the county, and we think we've heard of what are we doing at our business parks. So make sure we're doing what the county wants to see doing at those business parks.
Yeah, I second all that. And it's, you know, there's representatives from different communities, Tongonoxie, Baser, Lansing, Leavenworth. So it is pretty representative, I think, of the entire county. And it's people that are from different backgrounds. There's construction guys, there's finance guys. Doug and I are probably the, you know, different even from those guys, you know, pharmacist and cattle rancher. So there's a lot of different perspectives on, on things. But it's a, it's a good representative of the, of the county, I think. It's people that are invested in Leavenworth County, that are in there to see the county grow and develop, so, yeah, I think, and along with what Doug said, it's, we're able to, you know, hear from different corners of the county and have small projects that, you know, aren't necessarily something that's going to get the attention of you guys, because you only have so much time. You know, something like the Hills Project, you guys need to be involved on that. You know, that should come to us, but, you know, somebody wanting to open a little mom and pop store or something like that, or an existing business that they've been working out of their, out of their barn, on their personal property, well, they're, they're ready to grow and they're looking for property in the county, then they can approach us or we hear about that through the LCDC and that sort of thing. So it's, it takes a while, like Doug said, for us to figure out how it all works, but there's, there's guys on there that have been on there for a while and kind of shepherd the group and help us with the history and precedent of what's going on.
One of the things that's happened, of course, you've probably read in the papers, is about this battery plant that's in the city. And so I think, I think kind of, we went to a meeting yesterday about the battery plant. They're having another meeting February 22nd where they're going to be actually forming like an organization that's going to be like regional to try to impact the way this affects various communities. So I think one of the things to communicate through this is maybe seeing the Port Authority definitely wants to be at that meeting on the 22nd, or have representatives there. And I don't know if you guys have discussed what's, what's happening with that at this point, but, but part of this is, I think, the commission wants to kind of have a communication open door to you guys more so than we do.
Yep.
And maybe Mike can tell you what has happened as far as the economic development has changed. Last, yeah.
Well, you guys are, you guys are, are, once we brought on the economic, which I thought, which I think we needed, because the county's never had one, had a mass plan. It was brought on, and other people say things, but it's brought on to complement and help each other. It's bottom line down. One of the things I've, I've seen though is sometimes it seems like some of the information is not getting to y'all, or, or we're not getting it back to us about some things that y'all probably think are important and we think is important. I think Vicki, the chairman of the, uh, sits on that. But there's been some issues, you know, about the, the funding and things like that. And the reason we did that was not to take money away from everybody, it was because I personally felt that we needed a county economic director to assist with the other areas that y'all don't cover, because we kept trying to fit things in that round peg and that square hole that come to retail and stuff like that, which I didn't think was working, because Steve Jag and everybody else, and Josh, everybody else, were saying, this is our mission statement, this is what we're going to do. And I know you work right side by side with the LCDC, you know, you guys are joined at the hip, really. So I think any way we can have open communication with, and Tom, with that, but I, I want to reverse that a little bit. What do y'all say, if I can, what do I say, what do y'all say that we could have for the issues that are going on that makes your job difficult occurring? I mean, and, and we're not going to all, you know, we're not going to all be on the same sheet of music, but I think we've got a better relationship going than we've had in the past, but I, there's got to be something that y'all see. I know we're going to talk about the bridge and things, our priority and that, stuff like that, but what do y'all see as things that consist y'all of knowing what the county commissioners are looking to do? Or do you feel like you're getting enough guidance on that?
The, I'm giving, quite frankly, when it was brought up about the funding issue and everything, obviously that's, that's a challenge for us going forward, but we address that. I mean, that's, yeah, the committee's been around for, what, 60 years now, a bit longer than that.
1960.
There we are. Some of the past chairs I've known take care of down the pharmacy and everything, and they've talked about those sort of things. So that, it is what it is. Money is not available, money's not available. We have to change a little bit of what we can do, what we're allowed to do. We can't, as much as we'd like to give every project that is interested in our help and funding, it can't always happen if there's, we can fund ourselves out of the distance, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's not a good one for anybody, you know, us anyway, to sit there. So, and I think we, we addressed that earlier this year. We've been on the conversations there, or we've said, we've, after we've worked on the current project, it may come, project Brady, which may not follow the works anyway, because we put a moratorium on it for a while.
Yeah.
And that's just the way it goes. Yeah, that's just the way it goes. Other than that, no, you all have to provide guidance. We've looked real hard at people who presented in front of us to make sure it matched what the business parks were built for. It has to do with people, bodies, jobs, building. The nice thing about a building is it can take with them.
Yeah.
So our biggest hurt now is we don't have any buildings out there. Biggest request is for the 90 to 100,000 square foot buildings that can be used by a single company or could be divided and everything. That's what we get asked for and what we have to turn away from a lot of times.
Let me ask you a question on this, and I know that you guys are trying to say, well, it's our duty to, we've talked about this among ourselves, is we come into the county, especially the way the economy is right now, folks, I'm telling you, and we're, our budget's so tied with what, what's happened with fuel and everything else. Is there something in place, and I, you know, as a city minister in Lansing 17 years, I said on the LCDC, and I went to every major, I enjoyed the folks there, I really do enjoy talking to them and see what's going on. But somehow we got to be able, when we do one of those parks, something to bring money back into the kitty, the coffer. And instead of just coming up and asking for the county commissioners to fork the bill, even though I think we could, even before I was here, they've done a really good job of that. But we've talked about, and I don't know if that comes at your table, that comes at LCDC's table, talk about when we develop something, there should be some kind of, for a better word, admin fee. Say 10% comes back, 10% comes back, so you don't have to come up to us every time. I know a lot of places do that. So when you go to sell a piece of land and you're working on it, giving them money, or whoever's doing it, somehow that funding, part of that bill that we're paying you, charging, comes back. And there's a bunch of ways to do that. You know, you don't have to do it all up front. And I brought IHOP in, I guarantee you, there was a, there was three or four different ways we worked out to get them, get them to come. I just think that everything we're doing for everybody else, in a, in a place where we want the land, they should be helping down the line with some kind of price, say $200,000. That's what the land's going for, that's what y'all are able to sell it for, everything. Well, maybe it should be 210, and 10 goes back, or something goes back to help y'all offset, especially when we've got some of these Gutjar's buildings, like he's wanting to, Bennett, Dan Gutjar, there's a...
Spec building.
Spec building, thanks, Doug. That they're wanting to put in. I, we got to be able to generate some more funding to help y'all too. It's just a thought of, y'all, is that something's been discussed, or?
I'm not sure if it's in our, if you want to say bylaws, I'm not sure if, for instance, without going too much, for those who wanted to call yesterday, you know, the Baser had a little trouble funding the Brady project, and they wanted to make an installment out of it, and unfortunately, we're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, so, yeah, would you run into those laws and restrictions every now and then?
We'd like to. I think this is a project we positively identified as being somewhere back in.
Yeah, I heard about that, yeah.
And unfortunately, not all the big ones, and that was a surprise, you and I both yesterday, they hadn't gotten all the ducks in the hole, but we just couldn't do that sort of thing. And of course, you know, the, it's set up the fund itself. We do get that money back eventually. If we were to take all the money we had in our kitty and to, quote unquote, loan it out and offer, that is paid back to us eventually. It should be a self-sustaining program eventually, but it could be 10, 15 years down the line before it becomes available, if there's a mechanism on it.
And I don't know what to read, I just, I know we've talked about it, so I just want to thank you, throw it out there. Of course, in my opinion, my simple opinion, is Leavenworth County's on the beginning of things that are going to happen. We're seeing it already down south, that's going to come up here, there's, we're talking, Jeff and I and a bunch of us are talking about a bridge that we obviously come in to Lansing going across, we think that's an economic driver. So things are going to begin to happen, so we want to make sure we have the funding, or at least the design, whatever we need on the shelf, to be ready to take it. And when you say a shelf project, that could also make, you've got to have funding set aside. And we know from the past on these kind of commissioners, there's been some things that promised, but those taxes have never got completed. And we're still...
No, I can share a little bit.
And we're, we're still battling that, we're still battling that right now, to try to get caught up on that. But if there's something that can ease some of the pain on that, because people are going to want to start coming here, I guarantee you. And I know you just Port Authority and cities are doing, the LCDC is doing it, but we're going to start needing, saying we may need more money than just getting back what we're getting on the return, you know, just putting that back up. That maybe not be enough to cover some of the projects that y'all are going to be dealt with.
And you guys are kind of the gatekeeper, and the commission, was it two years ago or three years ago, we routed all of our economic development through the Port Authority, and then you guys send it over to LCDC for various projects or what they designate, but they're a nonprofit organization, you're a represented organization with representatives from all the communities. So you guys are kind of the gatekeepers of the resources of the taxpayers that's coming through, and I think that's kind of what we want to see yourself as. But one thing that we have, a number of commissioners at least have expressed is that when dealing with LCDC, we'd like to have Mr. Cole on the executive committee of LCDC and as, you know, because what we've tried to do with those changes is to make the county leader in economic development. So when we're dealing with these funds going over to LCDC, I think, from my perspective at least, I'd like to see you communicate that with them, that we need to have...
I disagree.
Well...
Well, I'm just saying, I disagree entirely. I do not think it's appropriate for the county to insist of having representation on a nonprofit, non-governmental board of directors that's an executive committee. I think that...
Our tax dollars are going there.
Well, but so are private dollars, and I just don't think that's an appro, I just sincerely do not believe that that's appropriate. I think that...
Well, I think as a, I think we had a consensus when we...
I don't believe we did have a consensus. I think it was not a consensus.
Well, let's have a discussion about it, right?
And I gave a decision.
Well, I just...
I think, from my opinion on it, I think we're getting, Vicki brings a good point up, and Mike you bring up a good point. They've already given us direction, or told us what they're going to do and what they're not going to do, and I read their thing. We've got, yeah, we've got so many other things we need to look at. I'm having a tough time, I want the relationship between the county and Port Authority and LCDC to run as smooth as... I'm not saying I don't believe that we shouldn't have improvisation, but we do, but no one else is. And to fix that, if you want to do it, you'd have to take all the cities...
Right.
And you have to put them all in there. And I just don't want that challenge right now. I know in the beginning I felt sorry about it, Mike, but right now, I think, there's so many other issues in the town right now, let's just get those resolved, bring that forward, let them make their decision, and in the, you know, future time, we think that's a better idea. Now, that's just me speaking, though.
Right. Well, I'm just going to say, when the budget time comes, from my perspective, I'm not going to support any money over there if our leadership's not included in the executive committee.
I just disagree with you, because there's other...
We can, we can report it for it. It's like giving it to charity. We're giving it in good faith. If they don't do what we're supposed to do, our hands are clean.
And I do not, I just simply do not feel that that's appropriate, because as, as Mike just said, also, the, the city of Leavenworth should have somebody on it, the city of Tongonoxie, the city of Baser, the city of Easton, every person that is, that every, I mean, Lansing, I mean, I'm just...
We're the number one funder, we're the number one funder, all those other organizations are.
Not right now, no. Right now, the Port Authority makes a decision, the Port Authority can make a decision that said, no, we're not going to any longer give funding to the LCDC. We're going to put it all into something else that, based on their board decisions, they could do that.
That's correct.
That is correct. So therefore, we no longer directly fund the development corporation, and to demand that we have representation on their board is very disingenuous to me, because anything, any decision that's made now hangs the balance of what the Port Authority makes a decision to do. Well, we have given them that authority.
I disagree, because I think it's disingenuous to say that we're not the number one funder when it's just a pass through. We're giving them the funds, we have the high expectations that LCDC will have projects to do, and then they pass that money through. We are the number one funder of LCDC.
Okay, fine. Okay, we're the number one funder of LCDC. That does not grant us the authority to tell a nonprofit organization that they must give us representation on that board. That is ridiculous.
We are...
We have a lot of organizations that we have given...
Taxpayers, guardian.
How many other organizations that we fund do we demand to have representation on their board of directors? Do we do it for every single one of them? Yes or no?
How many...
Yes or no?
How many organizations do we give this type of funding to, that level of funding?
I don't care, it doesn't matter the level of funding, they, it's almost relative. It's almost relative.
The thing, well, I don't think there's consensus to do that, so we can talk about that in the future, why don't we move on down the, down the road?
Well, and I think one thing too to keep in mind is there's, there's several, I mean, yes, the Port Authority is, is one of the gatekeepers of where those funds go and how they're used, but, for example, when we were talking about Project Brady, first of all, nothing would happen if we didn't get funds from the county. So that's the first thing, is county provides funds to the Port Authority. Then the Port Authority Board has to decide, look at the project and say, you know, is this, what is best for the county and the communities that are involved? So you've got to check there is the second gateway to go through. The LCDC also has a board that has to approve it, and our funds don't go through LC, don't go to LCDC unless they sign off. So you have, you have multiple boards and groups of, of volunteers and individuals within the county that have to sign off on this before those funds go. So I mean, it's not, it's not just, you know, money flowing out the door, I mean, we take each project very seriously.
And that's, and that's something that the county commissioner wanted, was for the money to route through the Port Authority rather than just going to a nonprofit organization. No, you have more accountable.
Legally, it has to do that, you're causing government, we can't just hand out money.
Didn't, didn't we just directly fund the LCDCs?
Yes, yes. And it's, so, on the Port Authority, of course, it started in 1960, I believe there's only one other Port Authority in the state of Kansas, or is it?
Two more.
Is there two more?
Two toes.
Okay.
Oh, there's two toes?
Two toes.
And then we don't want to give up a...
No, we don't. No, I'm not saying that. No, I'm not saying that. Like I said, you know, when it started in 1969, Leavenworth was booming. You didn't have to leave this town to get a good job. You didn't have to leave this town to shop. You had the plaza, you had everything you needed in Leavenworth at that time. When you talked earlier about the cities could not make payments to you on the cash basis laws, anybody working on, any legislature to try to get that changed? Because a few years back, I believe in 2018, they changed the, legislature changed the law that you could sell property for less than what you had in it for an incentive. Does that sound right?
That was before my time.
Yeah, but it, well, I think Representative Jim Carlson carried that, and you were able to do that. I believe we're, I believe that is, that is, we can't do that. So I know, there's, I'm sure we're talking about spec building program, where you're, when I ask the cities for money and all that, and they don't have that kind of money sitting around, and they make their payments based on the taxes they've received from them, I guess. And I would like to see the Port Authority have a revenue stream so you don't have to come in here, and we need to figure that out. So is it going to be a performance-based thing, where you bring in a business, you get a certain percent of the taxes, or something like that? I mean, there's all kinds of scenarios we can do. The spec building, I mean, the one you're talking about in Baser, I mean, you know, let's go back, the county never did pledge any funds to that. And it was said at the beginning in July that the county pledged, had agreed to fund this, and now they've had a changed position on it. Nobody's ever corrected that with the city of Baser. Now you're pushing the same building down there again, and, you know, instead of going to be asking for funding, it's, it's, you know, the $200,000 that's, that's being put up is actually the county's money anyways, and then they come back and ask the county for another 50,000, that's going to be a little tough. So, the Port Authority owns quite a bit of property, you know, these, the park down there in Tongonoxie, I don't know how many lots you have left. What, what, okay, there's only three lots left, okay. So I guess if the Port Authority, Port Authority has the ability to borrow money on their lots, they can fund projects, and if they sell the lots, they pay the loan off.
Lots have been there for a long time, and actually, in the last two, three years, we've managed to, I don't, I don't want to say amortize, but sell the lots.
Right, you have. It's because the legislation passed that you could sell it for less than you had in it, probably, and you could use it for some of the incentives.
We use, we use a little bit of that incentive, but we take a hard look at the business and the return of the business that's offered us.
Number employees.
We have turned down probably more opportunities than we accepted from Port Authority, only because they didn't match...
And that's probably in your scope of job and duties.
What we need to do. It would be easy to unload the lots, the money we have in there, they were purchased a long, long time ago, no question.
But they could have a margin. I mean, it's just run like a business, everybody says government needs to run like a business. Well, maybe borrow money against your assets and fund some of these projects, and sell a lot, pay it off, whatever. The county's paying interest on our money right now that we're getting out, I guess. We have loans. And the, what is your opinion, you know, on these two industrial parks? You know, the city's own, would it have been better if the Port Authority would have owned them industrial parks? Um, I don't, I don't know if, you know, in my couple of years on the Port Authority, if I've got enough experience to be able to tell you one way or the other on that. I don't know. I don't know the minutia, which, which would be easier, if the Port Authority wanted it to be better than the city.
I guess, for me, it's a bit of a perspective thing, in the sense that I've been in Kansas City for most part all my life, but watched Kansas City develop, watched South Johnson County develop, or like, if you look at it as a big pie, this is the last quarter of the pie around Kansas City developing. There's a huge opportunity out there, but we're still competing with Alatha, we're still competing with Lenexa, we're competing with people on the Zuri side and everything. And it's a tough competition, as we all know, and our state legislators are well involved in that and everything too. We want to do it right. We have a quiescent member, well, one of the causes is on a ward, a transportation ward, talks about developing highways and everything. And rather than put new highways in, they want to make sure we're developing one quarters of the highways that already exist, things like that. And we're just, we're just kind of on the outside of that looking in. We just want Leavenworth, county of Leavenworth as a whole to be involved. Biggest problem I see with business parks, and if I get myself in trouble here, that's fine, is our business parks have to be somewhere where businesses that might employ 20 to 100 people can exist, which means it's difficult, for instance, a new business park that's out there, it's wonderful, but it's for small-sized businesses. You can't give large businesses there, because you really don't want 18-wheelers driving down Eisenhower and at the rapid rate every day.
It is a problem.
So that limits the size and scope of the large business. Tongonoxie's benefited from it because it's right there on the highway, and we help that way.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, I mean, because I know at one time, excuse me for a second, I'm owed off again, the, if you get something like that, let me make your highway or something like that, and my understanding, when the three lots or all the lots sell out, we're going to be looking for some new areas to have a new industrial park, and how do y'all foresee that? Will you send out to the communities, ask them, is anyone interested in it, or how do y'all see that? Because I know, I've been told that y'all are, you're starting a process with, I mean, LCDC to have that.
I want Doug to, yeah. I know LCDC was talking about having a committee that would start looking at where the industrial park would be, and I visited with a couple of folks out there, and Leavenworth used to have all kinds of connections or there were railheads with industrial park, and a lot of that's been torn out over the years, and now there's none. Where we put our next industrial park, we should consider definitely rail, because we've got a lot of businesses that have been turned down because we don't have access to rail. And there's two or three different locations where that's a possibility. I know Paul Crank from the city has said there's one up north, and there's probably one here in town, one down south. But to put that on the agenda, and I don't know where the Port Authority fits in with that process compared to LCDC, but you guys are, you know, since you are the funders, the person who holds the purse strings, you have a lot more power than you might think you do, than you're talking about these things. Yeah, the rail answers committee is, for the next industrial park is on our agenda.
And I, and I think definitely railheads should be on our consideration.
Yeah, and we, we see that every, every month in our meeting, Lisa is telling us about the inquiries that come in, and, you know, we do see rail access to rail.
You know, they looked at that about 27 years ago, there was a plan with the city of Leavenworth and Lansing, you know, places, it was just a study, it never went any further, but it was interest back then, that, you know, we used to have a lot of rail come through our, our communities, and we still got access to it. I think those are just a bigger picture of, a bigger picture is, like, we, we looked at one time at an airport down south, look at things that are, that are just, that could help the county, you know, bring, continue to bring people. That's what I was trying to say a while ago, we are the last part of the Kansas City area, and we should, and we should be prepared to expect the growth and be prepared to set a level of direction.
And to continue what I was leading on to earlier, we have opportunity, like I said, in Lansing, you've got K-7 right there, Baser right there at the intersection, two of those, and it takes some, there's no question, you know, when you go to Alatha or Lenexa, who we compete against, they've got the buildings. Now, that's a tough sell here, and it's a tough economic time to throw up, and you're looking at a million dollars put together one of the buildings. But in order to entice the businesses to come here, we have to have a couple of those, and that's not an easy sell. I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon.
Yeah, that's what, that's what promoted the turnpike interchange on County Road 1. And that was supposed to implode just as soon as we got the gate open, and it didn't.
It's done well. Tongonoxie has taken a while. Tongonoxie has benefited here in the last two years, at least.
But you throw that kind of money in Easton or Leavenworth, you'll see some benefit.
Well, you saw it too, and y'all remember, I was years ago, it was a shirt, 2440 used to be a single. I mean, you, you drive down that thing, and then once the, the money went in to widen it, it's a highway, then it...
The county money went in, no state money did that.
The county money went in to do that, but what I'm trying to say is, once the, once the development happened and it widened, then people got interested again. Your point is it will take him, because until we can put something up that's going to get the interest of the larger places, and that takes funding, and that's why it's so important to go back to what we're saying is, when we do sell these things, there's going to be some way to recoup some of this, so we can put it into our, to our accounts, so y'all have this, besides what everyone else is giving.
And I think any grants that are going through these organizations and they help businesses, there ought to be a percentage on that that gets.
Y'all ever talk with the legislators?
I have.
I'd be glad to have them come visit, just a thought. I don't want to even meet them, just to sit down and point out to them.
We're in session now, so. So circling back to the beginning of this conversation was like we went to this meeting about the battery plant. Uh, the Economic Development Corporation, Douglas County, already has established a committee that's working to, you know, see what impact that's going to have on their county as far as the battery plant. See what of that several billion dollars that's been appropriated, what part of that can go towards infrastructure in their county. So my encouragement to you guys would go back, try to put together, or get them to put together something, and I've talked to them as well, that we, we need to be, we don't want to be behind the eight ball on this. This money's already been appropriated. I mean, we've already gone, the state's already gone into debt for this in a big way. But there's monies for infrastructure, especially southern part of the county. We may be able to access some of that, those resources. But if we don't have our Economic Development Corporation and our Port Authority and our economic development, if we're not all on the same page and pushing in that direction, then we could also lose out on that. Douglas County definitely got the upper hand. Ten highway and everything, but it definitely. But it will impact the southern Lebworth camp. Absolutely. It may be just in the housing market though. But that's, that's infrastructure. That's, that's nothing they can deal with.
I mean, Baser's the fastest-growing community, uh, in the state right now. And it is driven by housing.
It is driven by housing.
It hasn't exactly driven the business side of it yet.
Still not enough to support a grocery store.
They tried that.
No, no.
They did test.
That's too many years ago.
Two Walmarts with the ten.
Right, yeah. And that's, that's what I'm saying. It has changed, you know. You didn't, back when the Port Authority first began, you didn't have to leave this town to work or shop. It was all here. That's pleasant. Yeah.
Well, since, since we're talking openly in that, and having lived here for a long time, the, uh, the challenge would be when people in Baser, I live in Baser. I worked here in Lebworth, that's a farm, so I live in Baser. And my wife even asked me about that. I pointed out to her, what do we do to get all those people that live in those houses in Baser to shop at a grocery store here? It can't be, with all due respect, a brother's market, they're looking for a price chopper or something like that. What do we do to get them to shop? One enters price chopper, come to Baser or somewhere in between, Baser and Diagonoxi, something like that. What do we do to get those people stopped because it's a veteran community shopping at the Walmarts and the price choppers and everything else that they've been doing for years? A brother's market isn't going to do that. They tried out the Oshmans years ago. That was lawful.
That was a very good store.
It was, it was great. You just couldn't do it. Now, you're not the only ones make that mistake.
But that didn't, that didn't have anything to do with business.
No, I was just pointing out, like, Wal Brothers down on K seven, they're pretty good businessmen.
But the Oshman store, that was a Wolf Creek grocery store.
Right, a grocery store.
It wasn't because of low business that they went out of. It was, it was to do with management and some other stuff.
They overcapitalized. They, they built too much store, invested too much money.
And it was a really nice store.
But how much did the county have, and before my time, you all can tell me how much did the county have invested in that? I'm sure there was.
City project.
That's why I want to say.
Looking at another angle at.
Well, no spec.
That building didn't go anywhere. They couldn't pick up that building lease, so they were able to capitalize on that. They get Oshmans, they continue the tax base.
Right.
So circling back, as you said, back to the idea of the spec building. It's a tough push. We're going to have to look for private contributors here in the community. Carrie Carlson, Business Park, came about because the land was given to us. I don't think we're going to have anybody step up and give fifty, a hundred acres of land.
I'll be honest with you. I voted to give the $10,000, five to Tom, five eleven. I thought this was seed money for them to get started, sell the property, reinvest in economic development. I didn't realize this was going to give. That's, that's tough. And, and another, what, what do they call a spec building program right now?
Building program.
Building program, yeah, right. So, uh, here's, here's just a problem when you're talking to constituents, you're talking to people, you know, they're going to give a zero percent loan to the largest developers so that they can build a building. It's almost like, uh, you know, it's almost like you use a sum, crony capitalism. You're giving zero percent so they can build this building. And what the taxpayer theoretically would get a business that pays property taxes in, but the way people look at it is you're benefiting the wealthiest folks in the community and, and what is our return? That's, that's the way a lot of people are looking at it.
I agree. I was, we had one of our stores on, you know, on Main Drag down there, downtown. And I'd certainly love to see downtown Lebworth get revitalized. So nothing is more frustrating, this is before we were located down there, than to watch them build a third Walmart, the Taxation Association, a third Walmart here at Lebworth. And yet, they were tearing up Main Street, putting in sidewalks in, which is a benefit. But every one of those businesses got hurt for sixteen months, but we didn't offer any taxation to those people to help them through that time. And I don't think we've ever recovered from that in downtown.
I agree.
And that has nothing to do with where I'm sitting on this board now or anything like that. But that's just from a businessman's perspective in the community. Uh, there's still a lot of buildings down there. And being a student in Lawrence all those years ago and watching what we used to call the flop houses right around the city center in Lawrence that have now been bought by young professionals and restored to family communities so that Lawrence can exist now. It's kind of bipolar sort of town where you've got downtown community that's still very vibrant, not just students, but has young community, young families that redone all those houses and everything around the downtown where they like walking to everything. And then you have the southern end of the county, which has got all the big boxes on it. So it's, it's possible. Now, I think we're well off the beaten path here, no question about that. But we, we don't have any, uh, there's no cohesive direction as far as where we want to go with downtown. A lot of businessmen in downtown own those buildings. I don't know whether they all sit down and go, what can we do? My folks tell me, and I've seen pictures, what the downtown community used to be. This is way out of spec of what this was supposed to be. It's vast, you know. And I, I, circling back around the spec building program, which we're putting a committee together, we're going to find some land to build one. And I see tracks out there. I don't know whether we can get them, I don't know whether we give them to us, and I don't know where we're going.
Well, nobody's going to give them to you.
I think that, that my product would point though, and that is, you know, when, when loans are being made, why is it that you can't, you know, okay, do something that is below, you know, because you're already behind a Netherlander most of the time. But do something that is, um, you know, instead of zero percent interest, maybe one point five or, you know, something where it's below what somebody can actually borrow at, yet it is still income generating at the same time so that some of that is going back into.
I would have to put our bylaws. I don't know.
Well, bylaws can be adjusted if they're, if you, I mean, that's the thing about bylaws.
Create this revolving loan program, eventually you get a pool of money that like sustains itself.
Revolving loan.
You know, but just to make it to, there is something that is coming back into the Port Authority because otherwise, you know, making zero, um, interest loans, I mean, you know, just basically that's giving away versus saying, you know, you need to, and everyone, if, if you have an investment, at least even from a business standpoint of a business that's even, it, coming into a community building or, you know, a building or buying a building, that's an investment. But it's also an investment of the Port Authority in that business. And to say that we don't, you know, to say that there's no value to what we're giving to you, doesn't make sense. Am I making sense? Yeah. And so I agree with Mike. There should be some mechanism in place where there's at least something that is being made.
So the building in Baser is about $10,000 a year in taxes. Does that sound right?
That looks okay.
Okay. And, uh, of course, we'll get the county, the city, I'll bet, get that right away. But you can build a house in Falcon Lake and get that.
I know, I've been taxed like that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, old days. So we're not offering $200,000 interest-free loans to somebody to build a house in Falcon Lake. It's the same tax return.
Blighted neighborhood.
It's blighted neighborhood. So that's what I'm saying. There needs to be some, like, commissioner cost of, I mean, low interest. Something, and in the money, you could get, you know. So we got to figure out some way to get you a funding stream rather than coming in here and saying, we need this, we need that. I mean, whether it's a portion of the taxes that come from these things, you know, we give all the tax, you know, something. For the first five years or something, you give the taxes or something, you know, performance-based thing. I would just, and I don't know if the Port Authority ever had a, a set funding stream that it just took care of itself. Like, it was.
So, and it was, the Port Authority was formed in nineteen sixty-nine. And when they formed it, if you go back and read the resolutions, the whole idea was that it was going to be self-funded, not matter of time. Obviously, that never, um, in sixty plus. The concept of a fee, you know, development occurs. We've floated that a couple of times and there's interest, but it never goes anywhere, you know. So, um, when you, when you're, when you want to be self-funded, you have to find a funding source other than taxpayers, because that's not self-funded, that's not tax. The fees for usage, like, when somebody applies, they have to maybe pay an administrative fee that goes in to help cover the staff. And then the, um, a percentage of a loan that you're doing out loans, a percentage of loans that the Port Authority keeps. Or if you're doing a big development and there's, well, we use Hills for instance. If there's this huge investment, the property taxes are going to be collected on that forever, then why wouldn't the Port Authority or the LCDC or whoever be able to ask for a percentage of the taxes back? So rather than us pay upfront, you pay for performance and then Tom is what it's.
Performance-based, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you get paid based on performance and, and banks do that and, you know, sales and general do that. And that's what the commission had floated a year or two ago when we were talking to the Port Authority and the LCDC about, um, funding is that, is there has to be a transition from the current model, which is the county gives seventy percent of your income that was LCDC, but, um, to a more balanced approach. Um, and that's, those are all things that we looked at, but it's never, it never goes anywhere. It seems like, you know, about, well, I believe you ask for a percentage of the taxes on businesses that you recruit. It makes it tough when the cities.
Eighty percent tax.
Hard to get ten percent off nothing, but, you know, it, maybe you don't give a hundred percent repays. Maybe you give a ninety percent rebate that the Port Authority keeps, or the LCDC keeps ten percent for a certain number of years. Those are the things that we talked about. It's not for us to really make those decisions, obviously. It's not, we don't accept them. They're, the Port Authority's quasi-governmental. Yes, we appoint the people on there, but then you become your own, or it's in your own bylaws, so.
But as, as we move forward in economic development, we're trying to get over a team where all these groups are working together as a team. That's the goal. But if it gets to the point, you know, we, we want Tom to, and his office to be the leaders of this. But if it gets to the point where we find out, well, there's certain projects or things that we can identify through the county office and, and we're not getting, I mean, it's, it's a process of change, you know. This economic development model, LCDC and Port Authority, it's been going on the same way for X number of years. Maybe over here, we find that he's able to identify some industries to come in and maybe our funding would then have to be moved over in a little different direction than it's been in the past in order to. But the, the end goal is to bring economic development into county. Maybe we're going to add it in a different direction. But what I'd like to see is LCDC, Port Authority, the county's economic development office, all work together, identify what areas are the best, you know, what do you do best as Port Authority? What does LCDC do best? And what does the county office do best? And where we work together. I think that's kind of the struggle we're, we're working with the last years. This has changed a little bit to figure out where everybody fits and what the direction is going to be. I think the struggle is mainly money. I mean, we are competing with Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Douglas County, and we don't have the kind of money to offer in cities. And let's face it, as much as I don't like tax abagments or law enforcement tax shifts, that's the way the game's played. We're not going to get anything unless there is some kind of incentive. But hundred percent, some of these, I support, like I said, that the part of the taxes could go back to the Port Authority. I don't know if that passes cash basis law or anything on that, or is that something legislature had to change? I would like to see just a steady revenue source for you folks so you don't have to come in here when we're dealing with budgets and like next year, I'm telling you, twenty-three is going to be one tough budget.
Yeah, we didn't invent the IRBs. We just have to offer those to compete.
Right.
You know, other, when people come to town, they say, well. We get offered free taxes for ten years or five years or whatever from this other location. What do you guys offer? We just have to offer.
That's a good idea. Well, what do you think the battery, the Panasonic thing costs?
We don't know too. They'll get that upon themselves.
It's a dark. Right, but I'm just saying.
I'm not saying she's wrong or anything.
No, but I'm just saying, we don't have the kind of dollars to compete with these other surrounding counties.
And I haven't said that, and, and I don't know what is the answer. Like, I haven't been a lifelong resident of this area for the most part. Lenexa didn't have it either. I remember Alatha having one high school all those years ago. Now they have seven.
You remember Blue Valley then, too?
Blue Valley didn't exist.
Exactly.
You know, I remember four thirty-five not existing and everything like that. So it's all there, the opportunities are all there. It's just how aggressive we can be and it's difficult, there's no question about that.
Let me ask one thing, and Mark, you, I'm making a real face on this, you were talking. And I don't know if this even fits because you have to have blighted area. Everybody's familiar with the neighborhood revitalization thing. And, you know, you put in so much money, every city's got a different, you put in so much money and five percent goes to county or admin, admin special. And the ninety-five percent goes back to, uh, the person that's building the building. Why couldn't you take a percentage of that and get that back to the Port Authority?
Well, that's what we're just discussing and contemplating over a year ago, which is when you write a development agreement, you write the line to bring these businesses in, you're providing incentives or whatever. You can definitely have a carve-out, it's not like a neighborhood revitalization program. It's just a development program that says, you created this, uh, new development, a percentage of that that goes back to the people. The city basically takes the new taxes and collects, gives a percentage back.
Yeah, because eventually they get it all back too.
So rather than, rather than pay upfront like this spec building program, you could say, we're going to get this building built. And once it's built, we want you, we want the city and the county to give five percent of the taxes they've applied on that building back to, um, the Port Authority or the LCDC over the next twenty-five years.
Or it could be a graduated deal, you could give a lot more at the beginning to help get the money back and it just got a week off of.
Obviously, the challenge would be.
And I, and I was hoping, it was the last time we met, uh, with Port Authority and LCDC, or was it Port Authority or something? I thought somebody was going to work on that. I don't know.
We kicked it around, that was discussed.
It was discussed and I was hoping that somebody would come up with an option that.
Tom. Maybe I'm a little confused here and maybe you can help me here. You know, what we're talking about with, for instance, we bet around Project Brady and we got a list and you don't, I don't think you guys see the list. You're there all the time. This was, they were going to come in, it's not really a building, they're going to put a building up and they're going to actually operate a business out of it. I see that different from the spec building program, whether county or the Port Authority, whatever, at risk. They're putting a building up without intent with the idea that we're inviting businesses to come up.
Yeah, well, they would come.
And I'd say that, there you go. It's two different things. Like, this is a business, and most of the people come to us are businesses that either exist or they're going to put a business in there. And what I get excited about, one of the reasons I asked to join the board, was we need buildings put up so businesses can come in. And I see they got the buildings here, I said, okay, well, half our battle's done. And that's why Lenexa, that's why Alatha, that's why Lisa and all these other communities win this battle because they've got existing buildings. And of course, their tax bases have taken off, but it's the egg, chicken and the egg sort of thing, I don't know. But we don't have any big buildings.
And they're, they're investing, their governing bodies are investing in, in, you know, with the Port Authority in having those buildings built. You know, you look at some of those, the warehouses and things that have been popping up all over the place, but, but, you know. And then working on, and working on some partnerships with private entities to invest in getting those buildings built and then what, and then working out agreements of what percentage of the profits that that investor, or those investors, you know, can expect on, on a return that's, that can be. investors, you know, can expect on, on a return, that's, that can be somewhat immediate, because almost as soon as those buildings are, are popping up, they're being occupied. It's not like, you know, they built those, and then they sat there for...
Five or ten years.
And they haven't, I mean, they have really...
Well, and, for a short time, he and I have been part of the program, I don't mean to speak for him at all, we've only dealt with businesses approaching us, smaller businesses, they're looking, you know, on the smaller business park, we don't have a giant business park out there, or anything like that, but huge buildings, where we can attract a hundred-count body, physical mind, might live in.
Have you driven out to Ederton, seeing how that's built up?
Oh, sure.
That's the BNSF, we have a big, you know, modal plan out there, that it's, it's really built up, so, I mean...
That was farmland.
Yeah.
When I was a kid, that was all farmland, I mean...
But at the same time, Jeff found that there was, well, how many empty buildings?
A hundred and twenty.
There's, we, so, we're talking about big buildings, but when you talk about medium size and small buildings, there's a hundred and twenty empty businesses in Leavenworth, in just the city.
Yeah, but some of those buildings, that what is required to bring them to code, and to do some of the things that need to happen with them, are cost prohibitive for some of the people who are trying to invest in those properties, I mean...
But maybe that's where, maybe we help, if they're cost prohibitive, maybe we, I, I'm just saying that there's, he found, I mean, that's another thing to look at.
Right, well, I understand those are there, and I think all of the, I think that, that you guys realize that...
That's including, that's including vacant lots, and industrial apartments, too.
Oh, okay. Was that any of those?
Uh, no, that was not empty at the time, I made that count.
And, Nicky makes a good point, too, you know, I was, I was an executive with the VA for a while, my land or see my program out there, and one of the things that came up on a regular basis is the city's love for the VA, and its buildings and everything there, yet, when you get down to brass tacks, you look at what it was gonna cost to rehab one of those buildings, rehab one of those buildings, would have paid, they'd have been better off by bulldozing them all down, the biggest need in the VA was for funeral, for space to bury people, and it'd have been better to bulldoze all those buildings, and add to the funeral capacity, the, to bury them, than to rehab one building, but, everybody wanted to push, let's redo this building for the historical press, and I'm all for it, either side, we just, everybody's gotta look at all the numbers.
But you know, it, there's a certain value, like down, if you're talking about downtown Leavenworth, there's no option of bulldozing all those buildings down, and it would make a lot more, I mean, I would think that our economic development, or, I mean, we should at least look at what, helping to rehab some of the hundred, some buildings.
Well, we're not speaking...
Well, it could affect the city.
We may be speaking where Lisa should, she's got a better handle on this, in the sense that she knows about the downtown buildings.
Jeff has the list.
When we steer, steer people to those, we've got a fifth world...
Yeah, I'm not aware of a mechanism for...
Talking about the VA, we did lose that, too, the VA.
That went to Topeka, but that, you know, that's politics, too, having been, and I'll speak for a out of turn here, came up left because of politics.
Yep, absolutely.
And it disturbed me greatly, because I had a long-term investment in that organization, and then to, you know, this VA answers to Topeka.
And so did the county.
And there's...
We're making payments.
About fifty thousand a year, or something like that.
So, a lot of these buildings that are empty are, like Vicki said, you know, they're the older downtown buildings, so parking is an issue.
You know, that one's gonna be occupied here for a series of...
Yep, yep, that's a brewery, yeah.
That's a brewery.
And a lot of them are, like she said, issues with parking, or building codes, or ADA, and stuff like that, but, a lot of these, I mean, if you fast forward through here, are...
And, and we encourage that, don't misunderstand, we encourage that, we, part of our group looks at those buildings downtown, and if that's what they're looking for, we steer them to there.
Sure, yeah.
I see us, and maybe it's just my vision, I see us as looking for the large term employers, like Hills, like somebody else, we get in there, that's gonna build a huge organization, employ a lot of people, to provide a tax base in good paying jobs.
But it's also including the brand-new buildings, like on Eisenhower, the strip malls, that have been empty for years.
Well, you know the reason of that is, suddenly, you gotta go in, you have to, you have, and those things were built, the square footage, when the over-the-park folks come in, and what they're trying to charge, what they're getting over the park, what you're gonna get in Lansing.
That's true, the owner of those...
There's a lot of dollars out of, I found the city of Lansing ball town centers, because, so they can control the development.
But it also includes...
A lot of private money go into that, private, it was all private?
Yes.
And, you know, just to kind of...
A lot of it includes the industrial parks, right, I mean, they're breast, there's breast growing up, the over, the pedestal, which has been so long since, since we've done anything, these are, these are the brand-new ones, you know.
Oh, and that, yeah, Lansing, less your hearts, they, they bought that, controlled the land, and, from a construction standpoint, wore the dirt out of it, moving back and forth.
Well, we had the best heat going on in the wintertime.
But it wasn't wrong.
Yeah.
It wasn't wrong, don't get me wrong, it wasn't wrong to do that, you have to take those risks, and not all of them come out.
Yeah.
So, it come back to...
So, I don't know what our time schedule is, but I, I think those, we haven't really touched on the regional transportation study, as far as, I think, the commissioners are pretty solidified, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but on, that we wanna see the one-fifty-two bridge as a priority on that study, so, that's something when you guys are, you will be participating in the process to prioritize on that transportation study, we hope that you guys prioritize that one-fifty-two bridge.
Yeah, the two things that I wanted to bring up today was the one-fifty-two bridge, the regional transportation study that we're having done now, I think should, and this is just me, but, if, if you look at four thirty-five, it was almost a perfect circle, except it divots around Leavenworth County, it was originally supposed to go through Leavenworth County, but we opted out of the local regional council when they were planning that, so we missed out, this would fix that problem. If you're five minutes from a community, you become part of that community, if you look at Liberty in Missouri, they're growing like crazy, they can't even keep up, I talked to their city council, and I said, before one-fifty-two happened, we were struggling, we had hundreds of empty buildings, we weren't going anywhere, as soon as one-fifty-two connected them, they cannot keep up with business, industrial, and residential, we'd be the mirror image, the west side of one-fifty-two, because you know, one-fifty-two dead ends at four thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, so, we're one-fifty-two dead ends at four thirty-five, right there, we're six minutes away to Quick Trip in Lansing, so, you could get to the airport in seven minutes from Quick Trip in Lansing.
Where is this, help me, where is this gonna cross the river?
Um, halfway between the two bridges now, across the river, right there.
Right, no, I see that, I'm trying to figure where that is exactly.
Um, Tenetter Farms, and the state prison property, would, it'd be pretty much the property line between there, but you could take Quick Trip in Lansing, and be at the airport in seven minutes, Parkville is extended their city limits, all the way west to here now, so, we're four minutes, Lansing city limits, and it's four minutes from Parkville city limits. So, I think we've always tried to put the cart before the horse, with LCDC, and LAD, and the port authority, because, to get business here, it's all really dependent on location and transportation, if it's hard to get somewhere, you're not gonna get a big trucks coming in and out, and going twice as hard, so you've gotta put the connectivity first, then, big business will come.
What, what do we do, what can we do, I guess, to support that?
I think the regional transportation study that we're doing now is key to championing this idea.
We have, we have people that attend that, but when I say that, they're not members of the executive committee necessarily, but we have people that, that come to us with information, every month, we reach out, or last month, or...
You're gonna rate the projects, like you rate the projects, you'd like to rate those on, one-fifty-two bridges, you're talking mega project.
Because people wanna live here, and work in Kansas City, or they wanna go back and forth easily, to where they spend their money, or where they keep their money, so, it's a two-way bridge, it's not one way, they're not gonna just come here, and then only spend their money in Kansas City.
Well, I've told some of the folks in Missouri side, I'm all for putting a toll bridge back up, and just charge them for coming over, that's it.
Right.
They're some of my best customers, too, so...
My biggest fear is Panasonic plans gonna take all Kegoff money, and that area down there, comes in on...
I think we saw yesterday, if their plan spent probably five hundred dollars in that area, between what they're gonna do on K10, and what they're gonna do for new roads around the facilities, it's...
I, I think that's...
Is it building up, bringing presses, or is there a take home?
Oh, we can't open up the whole front.
But it never hurts to, to his point, and I think it's a very valid point, never hurts to be prepared, if you've been in this county long enough, we have a brilliant road between here and Atchison, that wasn't on the county's proposal, but we were prepared, and all of a sudden, we were gonna lose Nancy, we were gonna lose Bob Dole and everything, and that was a gift, and let's say, to us, and we got that wonderful road.
Having on the shelves, so, I'm ready, but, but what Jeff said, too, I think, is being ranked high on the transportation plan, it's definitely a thing that we can look back in the future and say, hey, this was a commitment, now things change, we know that, but having that, and you talk about an economic driver, I mean, with that, that's just unbelievable, I can take nothing away from them, but South, Leavenworth's getting, Leavenworth's getting a bridge, and so we're not competing with them, but I think just having it so it's lined up, where people can go and look at it, and say, this is a priority to...
But I'm just worried that, it's been for years, it's gonna go down there.
But we have people prepared.
Absolutely.
In case it happens, I mean, we got that great road up there.
Yeah, we have to be prepared, and we gotta have all the communities in line, whereas I support it, which, which is a cool thing, because...
That's what we're talking about, the twenty-second, because they're just sort of committees, they're gonna be working on this, they're, they're, they're talking about an organization, establishing, sort of a organization that would be regional, and if we don't have a seat at the table, so, I don't, if you can get some of your folks down to the meeting on the twenty-second, that'd benefit everybody.
Well, and I'll be honest, and I'll just speak for me, I'm a working pharmacist, my pharmacy survived, my, the owner of pharmacy, or I have to be there, it's just difficult for he and I just to get here with you all, so, and, and it's not that, I'd love to be part of it, and I walk away, I'd love to be more involved in...
I agree.
And you are interested in continuing on the port authority, correct, so we can, next week, get you reappointed, or...
In March, in March.
Oh, that's very kind of you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just checking, because your term is getting ready to expire in March, that's in March, but that we can prepare to have you reappointed, are you interested?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there we go.
So, there's something to get me out of this meeting today, but...
But the last thing I wanted to say was, the whole point of the port authority, LCDC, LAD, and all that, is to lower people's taxes, to increase our tax base enough to where people's taxes are lower, Liberty was able to drastically cut their middle levees, once one-fifty-two connected them, it'd be, it'd be, we'd be the mirror image, I think.
Let me ask you, because you seem to be more focused on this sort of thing, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the problem getting the Leavenworth Bridge built is we're waiting for Missouri to free up money to spend their hat, was that not true?
Part of it, moded out, was out of money.
And given the number, in this particular case, they have about a thousand bridges in Missouri, so, Leavenworth, we've got delay, we could have everything on the Kansas side ready, but let's say, ready to move, but we couldn't move, because we had it on Missouri, do we face the same sort of problem here?
Well, my goal is to just get the plans on the shelf, because I don't know how many times we've seen money show up, and they say, hey, what do you got ready to go?
The address is...
So, if we could just get the plans on the shelf, we've had private investors already interested in this, some, some things fell through, you know, but that's still an option, so there's lots of options, if we could just get it to the shelf.
And, I've got no problem supporting that, I won't speak for Dirk or anybody else, I've got no problem with that whatsoever, but I still think the, the vision that we were given, with us, is just, like I said, spec building program, it comes more and more for me, I wanna bring bodies into Leavenworth, and right now, what we can have access to is simply a building up that would deploy, that would track a business, that would employ a hundred people, I'd be so excited.
Exactly.
This would make your job way...
Because I know the liberty that...
Liberty's that same thing.
But that's so far, I mean, that's so far down the road, but we have, and I agree, we need it, but what we need to do is figure out a way, and a mechanism, of getting some of those spec buildings put up.
Funding.
I'm just saying, their job is to...
Funding, to get it to where it's a revolving loan program, a true revolving loan program, the money comes back in, money can go back out.
Well, we're not funding those buildings, we don't have the money.
Right.
No, I'm not saying that, but it's, the, the two hundred thousand dollars, interest-free is funded, and then you want the, the city to put in forty-some thousand, and the county to put in another forty-nine thousand, that's funding.
Yes.
So, we need to figure out some way that the funding doesn't just have to come from the county, that you guys can, you know, collect some of this back, whether there's a low-interest portion of it, or any grants, or anything that are available for some of these businesses to keep a percentage of it, or something, or, um, for, you know, like, the first five years of taxes, or something, you know, or, or portion of the taxes, or something, could go to you folks, whether it have to be through us, or something, some way to fund, fund you, without having to come in here every budget, or every time you get a building, and want more money. And Tom is working on a, we have a vacant pro, uh, policy that we adopted as a commission, but he's working on an overall, sort of like, comprehensive land use plan, well, comprehensive, like, economic development plan, so, once that's developed, then everybody can kind of get on the same page with what direction we're taking in economic development, and that's, that way, we're not like, spec building programs out here, this other thing's over here, kind of all have the same land.
I think, I think, Tom tackled his experience, just somehow to get that revolving, funding can come back, and that's...
That's a good idea.
It's just important about how legally you can do it, or what has to happen.
I, I'm nervous about the legal side of it, only, and I...
Well, that's fine, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, we collect it, and say, if we get ten thousand dollars out of this building, we just say, well, look, this, the port authority brought this in, what percentage of these taxes do they get?
Well, I agree with you, I, I'm concerned in the sense that, one, it gives us flexibility, because we don't answer to the electorate, you do, that gives a little flexibility once a while, that you all don't have.
Well, but if it's something that's never done on the tax roll before, now it's coming in, instead of, and if there's not a tax abatement attached to it, it's, it's easier to sell, well, what, you know, they, they brought this business in, they brought this in, you know, they get a percentage of the taxes.
Yeah, I think the way that we approached it in the past was, or, or, up until now, current approach was, we'd come to you guys, and we'd say, look, we've got this building, here's how to break down, you're gonna recover your investment in this number of years, can we have money to do this again? And I understand what you're saying is, let's cut that part out, and just have that be part of it, where the money's coming right back through, and, and I, that, I think we just have some questions to, when we go back to figure out legally, how to...
Because we'll be in the same, we'll be in the same boat, basically, you come in here in the middle of the year, we don't have money to budget.
Right, right.
Well, Baser brought it to us, the, that was brought from the community, Baser, people in the community, I wish Vernon were, he missed the last meeting, he could have provided a little guidance for us, as far as Project Brady, but nobody from Baser was on, because he's...
Well, that's the council, they, they left.
Yeah, but he was, he was all, so, they weren't surprised by this, that this has been...
But they still need to make payments.
Yeah, they were asking for payments, if we don't have it, not, we don't...
Right, and that, cash base, all they can do.
Legal question, but we couldn't do that.
Right.
But I worry, I guess, in the long-term thing, where, since we're not an elected body, then we control a certain amount of funds that are coming from taxes and everything, I'm not sure about the legal niceties of that, to be quite honest.
Well, it, it would have to, it would have to come to us, if we have to figure out, say, this is what we can give for your budget, because you brought in these businesses.
Well, that doesn't have the longer...
Yeah, well, yeah.
The longer it's easier to...
Flexibility is nice, but then again, once you've talked about large sums of money and everything, that's not...
We get the, we get the answers on that.
How can we... We don't even have to worry about large sums of money.
I know.
Well, you said that we're not, you're not accountable to the taxpayer.
We're accountable to you all.
You guys are accountable to us, and so, I don't know how we do it, but I think we should stay more, closer contact than we have in the past, under now, and I, and I do think that you should sort of see yourselves as, you're sort of our representatives on there, as representatives of the commission.
Well, we are, every one of you all is welcome to join us in our meetings, we're such a broad, sloping community.
But if you can understand a general philosophy, where, where we're coming, that's why maybe meeting more often, or, once a year, or something.
You're about to meet us the past, we've already done that.
Yeah, it's gotta be done by...
Planning commission four time a year, are you kidding me? No, we don't need the people...
I didn't suggest that one.
Yeah, it was so much fun to have him to offer a different perspective in the meeting, Vicki is always on there and everything, and she doesn't hesitate, bring it in.
We're, we're restricted a little bit by the open meetings, uh, how many can be, you know...
Well, I said, answer Vicki, that time, she had another point.
Yeah.
Enjoy it, it's been a long time since I've been up there. Been a long time since I've been on there.
Oh, and we, we enjoy the perspective. It certainly gives us a new, especially people that have been on the committee a long time, Dirk and I relatively new. It brings a different perspective in that meeting. We appreciate it. Of course, we're just getting to know all of you all.
I think you bring a different perspective, too, which is important, too, to the Port Authority.
A fresh look.
You know, fresh eyes.
Yeah, mine is fresh look, yeah.
What you see. I have, as I listen, I think that you guys also, their wisdom and their experience is great, but, but sometimes get entrenched in this is the way we've always done things. It kind of helps to have somebody that's kind of looking in and saying, but, maybe this would be a better approach, or this is something new that we can look at.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Well, you don't, and you don't want to get up and use the bathroom yet.
You know how that works.
Yeah, that's what...
Thanks, Dirk, appreciate you having me.
I can't have it, can't it?
Yeah, I'll do it outside the door.
No, episode. So, thank you for the invite.
All right, well, just thanks for your, your time, and you guys are... Yeah, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Enjoy the conversation, Dirk.
One more thing. So, I know this is a long-range project, 152 bridge, but as far as short-range projects, and I know the Port Authority's not really geared toward existing businesses, but I'd like to see Port Authority and LCDC facilitate more existing businesses.
I think LCDC does it.
Right. But we miss out...
We work closely here, but you're right.
We miss out on a lot of opportunities, like the family greenhouse that got built right there on 7th Highway. We missed out on that, because we don't really deal with existing businesses. We lost the Country Mart Grocery Store. They went to the city, they went to LCDC and tried to stay open. They were no help. So, I'd like to see LCDC and the Port Authority engage in existing businesses to try to help them in any way they can, staying, but the TSC's looking for a bigger lot right now. So, there's a lot of, I think, work to be done with existing businesses that we're not really focused on, so...
Well, I think, and this is nothing, you know, this is paperwork that we get from her, you all see it. And she points to, you know, when these come in, it's, where does it fit? And it'll go to the committee where it fits the best and everything. So, no, I, hey, being a downtown businessman, I did everything I could to keep, and I say that, the owner, I did everything I could to convince her to keep that there, but it just couldn't do it, and that took her sense, and I understand that. But I hate to see the north end of town not have the medical coverage that it used to have. The hospital closing, and the pharmacy. It may not be the richest area of town, but they certainly, it's a little bit of a pharmacy.
Absolutely.
On the other side, it's got to be economically positive, so, I love that.
You guys got a tough guy.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys.